Oh, here we are. We're on, alright. It is Tuesday, October 4th at about 7:05. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals business meeting. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting and according to, according to the rules laid out in chapter forty-eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Roberts Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk and other copies available from the clerk at this meeting. This being, meeting is being taped recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may no longer be available. First order of business is, uh, monthly finance update. Patty, take it away.
Cash is a revolving account. The last, so last three entries from the last meeting was revolving hours and the deposit for the November first meeting for fifty-one Andover Street. So we're still, um, taking in more than we spent. And there's the expense light item and I'm just showing the, um, the supplies that were in there from last meeting. And the two July phone bills came in the regular and, uh, just, oh, and we just got a new phone. We got training today, a couple hours on a new phone system, which is, wow.
Two hour training, that's intense.
Well, it was kinda complicated.
That's difficult of phones.
Nine buttons.
So we get a, get a landline.
Down nine to get out.
Zero, you got a ten.
Yeah, a corded phone and then I'll get a cordless phone. But they have two, there's two numbers and then Town Hall will have a new main number or something like, I don't know. It, they're gonna do it on Friday, they're gonna install it, so when we come in Tuesday, I guess I'll figure it out with the directions.
I think it's answered.
Um, the postage meter I didn't put in here because it wasn't very much change. Um, and I attached the, so I just needed a motion for the minutes and I attached the minutes this time because they wanted that.
I hear motion to approve the minutes of September sixth, twenty sixteen. Shannon, Sharon, sorry.
Second.
Gina seconds. Make sure everybody was here.
That's for, um, business, can we do that for business?
Yep, that was for the business.
Okay.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none. Those minutes are approved and I need a motion to approve these hearing minutes from September sixth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Yeah, this is the one that you were, yeah, right. Just wanna make sure that, that was you, okay?
Yeah.
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 G T.
Gina is.
G T.
Okay, Paul seconded, uh, um. There any discussion on that? We all set? We're good, alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the minimum?
The correspondence is an email from Mike Farrell. It's, um, a public records request. Um, that we have to do for all department heads and key staff to explain the changes in the mass public records law. So I guess it's pretty detailed, so on Wednesday, November second at three thirty, I think it's to five. That's something I have to go to if anybody requests, you know, request the public information, you know, it's, they passed a new law. It's like the KMP is coming in. So that's on the calendar. The next thing is the, um, letter from the building inspectors for the next hearing for fifty-one Andover. For the addition from accessory apartment. The next item is special permit application distribution list to us from the planning department for sixty-four seventy-four East Main Street, the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza. Um, they have any comments down for, um, response by October fifth, which is tomorrow.
They're going for a site plan re.
Site plan review. And I gave you a little part of it, a couple pages of it, and then I emailed you the base, the summary part from the attorney on what they're submitting. I have a whole, full copy here because it's pretty, pretty big, but in your email, there's the, there's the copy, the big summary. I didn't wanna waste paper and put it all in here, so it's.
This has to do with the new parking and the stormwater management, right?
Right.
Okay. Nothing else at this time?
Right. Okay, um. Oh, business, okay. Application, the application. I had talked to Jeff. Um, um, look on page two of the application, someone came in with a, and we s- we say in the checklist under certified plot plan, we don't accept m- mortgage, the old mortgage survey plans or septic plans, but sometimes the septic plans in this one tag, it was like a plot plan and a septic plan all in one.
Well, it was a certified plot plan that showed the septic and it was titled septic plan, which is acceptable. It happened to be a plot plan that was certified and stamped. It showed all the setbacks on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But it was originally prepared for the septic design, so it showed the septic on it and it was titled, I think it would, I think you told me it was titled septic.
Yeah, it was titled.
Which is acceptable.
Technically.
Septic plans, I think for the purposes of the application were meant to be.
Title five.
What, yeah, they were non certi- they weren't certified by a surveyor necessarily, a lot of the plans that came, came in. It was like a septic design.
It was stamped.
So.
No, it was.
Anyway, I, she said, you know, I said, you can, if it's stamped by a surveyor and it accurately shows the setbacks and everything else that's required, then it's acceptable. So there's no reason to go do it again, I don't, I didn't think, but. So it's, it's, it's in here, right Patty, that they have to be.
Yeah, it says not acceptable at all, so I'm.
No, no, but, but the, oh, certified plot plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it explains what a certified plot plan is, so as long as they meet that, whether it says septic or not on it, I kinda said, well, that's sort of irrelevant.
Yeah. And we have mortgage survey plans, which we can really take both of those out because you can't, you can't make a change to someone else's survey plan. Like another engineer can't come in and, and make adjustments to someone else's plan anyway. Les wouldn't take it, so I'm thinking we should just maybe take that out so we don't, and then, you know, whoever's, you know, when I look at them, I know whether we can take them or not. You know, I'm not there and y'all looking at them, or Les is looking at them, as long as they have the setbacks and it does say certified plot plan. And it does say stamped and dated by a registered land surveyor engineer. So I'm wondering if you wanna just take it.
So Patty asked me if that could just be removed and I said, it sounds reasonable to me, but that we ought to at least discuss it before we make changes because this is part of our rules of procedure. Alright, so.
Well, the question is, does, does it open up people bringing them in?
I think.
Because it doesn't say.
Yep.
It's on there for a reason and it's to deter people from bringing the wrong thing, in bold print, I might add, handcaps.
And the other thing is, you don't want the applicant making their own measurements because how do we know if they're correct or not?
Bingo.
Well, it, it, a certified plot plan has to have all that on it and it's stamped.
Right.
Correct.
So then that.
But that's.
So whether it, I think the point was, it was all of that, but it was enti- it was titled septic plan.
Which I'm fine with, I'm.
Which, and so Patty said, we can't take it, so we're trying, but maybe, maybe we leave it and you just are aware that as long as it's certified.
Yeah. It was kind of bold. Yeah, just, no, it's, maybe we should leave it.
Then you can, I see your point, is that, what you're saying is there is a time where you get a septic plan that's like this big and.
And some septic plans have nothing on it.
The mortgage, you know what the mortgage ones look like?
Right. And it doesn't even show the whole lots.
So we definitely don't want those.
And you don't want like Joe homeowner putting on like some, you know, their own measurements.
I get, when that, when, from my standpoint, from my business standpoint, when we look at it, if it's certified by an engineer, then, and signed and stamped, it can have the septic on there, it can have, you know, swing set on there, I mean, it really doesn't matter as long as he's measured and, and surveyed the land in the.
But mortgage surveys don't usually have setbacks on them. They don't usually locate all of that.
Yeah, and we put that because people were.
Is a mortgage survey considered a certified plot plan?
No, no.
So what are we saying? Get rid of the things that we don't want, just say what you do want.
Yeah.
Have a survey certified plot plan.
It's stating those two are not acceptable, so people that don't bring them in and say, well, it doesn't say on here that it's not acceptable.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, so mortgage survey or how would you, how would you get around that septic plan thing unless it's a non, non-certified and non-certified septic plans are not, no, I'm, it could be a certified septic plan that's, doesn't have the plot plan information you need.
Yeah, I mean, the situation was that the plan had everything on it that was required.
It just happened.
But it happened to have septic.
Right.
Details on it as well, which is actually quite often the case. Mine, mine was the same way. I recall when we did it.
You had all the information on yours, yeah.
It's a surveyor did it.
Yeah, because they do it to save money.
And they happen to put on there. Aren't they always sort of plot plans now? Or they have plot information?
No. More now, so, they do now more so, but they do it just for two reasons. One, because they don't want to charge people twice and people don't want to pay twice. And because they can expedite the way in which they get their approvals. They can do one plan for this, this venue and for title five.
Go to Port Health, Port Health.
Um, maybe just put the mortgage survey plans or septic plans are not acceptable at the end. That way.
Unless they meet all the criteria of above or something, maybe.
Yeah, actually, perfect. Do that.
Well, it wouldn't be a mortgage survey plan if it met all the criteria of.
No. Right, exactly.
It's on there for a reason.
You should have a survey certified plot plan. I would just, don't say what you don't want, just say what you want.
Well, the.
So you just, that thing is you take it out.
That's fine, but you opened Pandora's box and people are gonna come in and say, it didn't say that.
But it does say certified plot plan, doesn't say septic.
It says you had need a survey or a certified plot plan.
Yeah, but if it's a, if it's a certified plot plan that has septic on it, then it qualifies.
Yeah.
So it's not a septic plan. I mean, you should see the title five septic plans, they have, they're drawings.
Yeah, I know, some of them are.
You know what I mean? So that's why they're saying that's not.
We don't really care about the septic at all, I wouldn't even. I, I think it's.
But people have, what, what Dave's saying is people, you know, paid a lot of money for this plan, it's been all surveys, it's dated, it's stamped, it's, and it has everything we need on it. And they're trying to use that same plan for multiple purposes, which is fine, as long as it has what we need on it.
We're concerned with this.
Try to make them go back and spend another thousand dollars on a plan or whatever it is.
I know. And if, and if the survey company engineer slash engineer has signed and stamped it, that he's measured, he's on the hook.
But I wonder if he would even put the setbacks on it.
Well, he will if, they, they do something.
If he stamped it, he does.
They have to put the se- it says to put the setbacks.
If it's a septic plan?
No, they don't have to.
Wow.
Right, so you could have a, you could have a topo.
Yeah, then they're gonna go back and put the.
You could have a topo slash septic plan that doesn't, that has plot plans and no setbacks on it, depending on what you ask for. I mean, obviously, we could measure it. It's just really, it's just a survey, I mean, straight up survey, right? A certified survey.
No, but it's gotta include all this stuff, setbacks, all that stuff.
So the thing is, it says it's gotta include all this stuff. Take the, the mortgage survey and septic plan out, you're gonna know whether it's certified plot plan or not. If it's got septic on it, who cares? I mean, are you gonna care that people are gonna come in and say, well, it doesn't say, I can't use that? And then, because all you can retaliate with is if it has everything that's required, you can, but it doesn't because of X, Y, and Z.
Because we didn't have that on the old application, that wasn't there at all.
Right, but then it was added on, right?
Yeah.
Why do you think it was added on?
Because that's what was happening, they were coming in with them. But we tell, but we send them away.
I'm sure you do, but there's no ambiguity with this statement.
Yeah.
They're not acceptable.
Well, it, it is a se- a septic plan, a septic plan titled septic plan is acceptable if it's also a certified plot plan.
It does. The one that they got in was said septic plan for such and such a street.
I know, that's the weird thing about it.
It had everything they needed on there.
Why wouldn't they have done two different plans?
And less, or you were saying, can they use this? And I'm like, well, what's on, you know, it's, yeah, they can use it.
Two different layers.
They didn't end up using it anyway, by the way, they ended up.
Oh, they ended up, see, then they went up, spent like two hundred fifty bucks to delete, you know, the septic details and have the guy restamp it, which is kind of.
So either. It is a little bit crazy. I think then, if you wanna keep it on, then put it at the end and then write unless they meet the above criteria.
They already jacked up the fees on it.
I'd be fine with that. I'm not, I'm, I'm not too excited about taking it off only because of the prospect of people gonna come in and be like.
Yeah, why don't you just say, yeah, unless, unless they meet all the criteria of, you can get rid of the rest.
And you don't have to capitalize it either.
Yeah, well, smile. Okay. And then the other thing was just, um.
So do you, you can get rid of mortgage survey plan altogether then, can't you? Because you were just really issue is the septic.
Those are the ones that everybody likes because they, they go to their closing docs and they rip it out of the back page and they come on and down here, it's too easy to. But I think that's the one you were having.
Oh, they might, and they might even think that's a certified plot plan, that's, I certainly would have thought.
And they had someone else make changes on it.
And there's a little, there's a little phrase, a lot of it says that I, you know.
Wasn't the same person who stamped it, so.
So the other thing was what fees due upon filing?
Um, under floor, under floor plan, the second thing where it says must have architect stamp.
Oh, yeah.
They don't even need an architect's stamp for floor plans for a building permit.
Yeah, I think that was.
Like fifty-one Andover's plans are beautiful, but doesn't, less like, I don't, I don't, building permits don't even require architect's stamp for floor plans.
We don't, we've reviewed plenty of plans.
Yeah, I don't like that.
An architect's stamp.
But you should have a landscape architect's stamp on there.
But I don't, I don't understand why that's not required because.
For the elevations and stuff, but not the, the, um, I don't know, building code.
Floor plans?
Yeah, I don't think you need, you can, you don't need any architectural plans for residential.
Yeah.
Oh, not architectural, but you would need engineering plans, like.
You would need structural plans.
If it's, if, yeah, for the structural drawings.
Where the walls are gonna be and everything, that's a floor plan.
Yeah, but I, I mean, if I'm giving someone.
I'm an engineer and that seems a little bit wacky to me.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't need that stuff. So saying is, we don't, we don't need that. If, if, we, we're looking at.
But we calculate square footages and stuff, like how do we not need that?
Floor plans, we do. But what you're talking about is the detailed plans and the, you know, two by six.
No, I'm talking about the floor plans. If the floor plan isn't stamped, then how do I know Joe homeowner isn't saying it's less square footage than he is because he wants to meet the accessory apartment standard?
Or in the case on Bailey Lane where it was going straight up and we were concerned about the corner, if there was a, a can of lever, it would then create a shortage of space.
But we don't judge, judge that, the building inspector does all that. We have to, we take whatever documents they bring us.
You mean, they're tapping the last hearing. They had someone else, they had someone else stamp that.
If I, if I wanted to, I could draw my own drawings, couldn't I, for an addition?
But that's my point. I don't think you should because how, how am I gonna?
If you look at the application.
How am I gonna test you?
It's America. That's why.
You can't just go, you gotta be a licensed.
Because the building inspector checks it. The building inspector, it all has to be built.
It's gonna get signed off on if they.
I've designed decks and stuff like that and I've actually done drawings.
So if, I'm gonna use the accessory apartment because I think that's the one that can show the biggest glaring issue. They build it. They say it's only seven hundred square feet in here, but they build it and it's nine hundred square feet.
Then Les makes them more bet out.
Right.
No, really? Les is gonna say you're wrong and then they're gonna come back here and ask us for a variance because they measured wrong. I think it's crap, I think it should stay in there.
Okay.
That's just my, I'm an engineer, so I just.
Well, this doesn't have it. This next one doesn't have it.
Doesn't have what, the stamp?
Yeah.
An architectural stamp?
It's done by, he's a, Les actually, um.
Who's it done by? A licensed contractor?
He's, um, it's called Architecture of the Company. It's a, it's a company that just doesn't have the, that particular stamp.
I'm trying to think, I mean, I.
I think you gotta be licensed, it's gotta be licensed.
On the last hearing, they had someone else stamp that, so they had, they had a drafting company.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter what happened before.
Do the floor plans and then they had some other, some guy just come in and stamp it.
The guy that was sitting here that drew the plans.
He didn't stamp that. That, he had someone else stamp it.
Which can, no, that can happen, yeah, that's fine.
I think what Gina's point is though, for the sake of making our decision, the only reason we really care is if it, if it impacts calculation we're doing or something like that. Visually, we say per plans attached. Those are the plans, you gotta build it. I don't, you know, if, if you didn't have it stamped and now those don't meet building and he has to change them, then you're gonna have, you know, substantially or materially, then.
So if they're two hundred square feet off, will they come back here because they're too, they're too big? What are we gonna do?
They would not comply with.
Well, I know that you, some of you would vote to let him do it.
Well, what are we gonna do?
He's gonna have to come back here with a new set of plans.
And I would say no, because that's exactly what you guys did before with the barns.
No, no, really. No, if he, no, if he, if they, if, if they all of a sudden have another two hundred square feet that we didn't know about, they're not in compliance with the, with the permit, they're gonna have to come back.
It doesn't matter what happened in the past, we're looking forward.
Technically, that's what they'd have to do.
And then we'll say, okay, you already built it.
No, we won't.
We can take a closet.
Oh, you mean after it's built?
Yeah.
And they'll take a door off and make it a closet. I, I.
Well, people need to have integrity, I mean, you can't, it's more.
And if it's not an architect's stamp, it's gotta be by a licensed, I mean, I could see like a licensed contractor drawing up the plans. It's gotta be somebody who's licensed.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what this, this guy is.
That's what I think. Like, I don't necessarily care if it's an architect.
I mean, these are, you should see these, they're beautiful plans and this is the one that, that triggered this.
Are there, does this ever come up? When's the last time this came up that somebody brought this? The first time anyone's coming in without stamped drawings?
They're really nice.
So what is it?
No, they, we used to take them off term.
They often are.
And then we stopped taking them for a while when, I wanna say two thousand.
I'm just trying to.
Four.
Figure out if the, if the issue that Gina's talking about has been a problem, I mean, is that, you know.
Different, different building inspectors want them standing in.
I don't know if it's been a problem, I'm just using that as a, as a example.
I know, I agree, I agree totally.
I just feel like it needs to be a licensed contractor. We just, my thing is, I just don't want the homeowner drawing up their own floor plans.
No, this was, this was, this was def- this was a company that did it.
It's gotta be. Because a homeowner is not, unless, unless they're a licensed contractor or a landscape architect.
I'm perfectly capable of doing that. Doesn't matter.
Then you're capable of doing it, but then you could stamp your own plans and that doesn't cost you anything anyway.
I know. No, no, not as a landscape, as a landscape architect, I couldn't.
Why not?
I can't stamp drawings of my house.
Not as your house, but.
No, no, but that's what I'm saying is, there are a lot of people that are capable of doing these things and they should be able to do it.
I know, but I'm just saying, like, unless. Unless they're licensed, unless they're licensed.
He doesn't.
I, I don't believe in that, but that's just my opinion. I, I, because licensed people are crooks too.
They're gonna call for inspections.
They can be. That's the problem.
You, you know what, you're right, but my point is, I just don't think it should just be.
It's not worth it. If you ever wanna say.
How are you, all right, are you gonna determine when the person comes up whether or not there was.
We're gonna defer this till next week?
Well, it's, you know.
No, but how do we determine whether that person is really capable or not? We're not.
That's through integrity, through, through neighbors, through, you picked the right person.
How hard is it, how hard is it and how expensive is it?
Yeah, that's another place that it is too.
It's not expensive and it's not, is it very difficult?
You know what, it's in. But you're gonna have to get it for your building permit anyway.
It's very difficult to draw plans.
No, to get a licensed.
That's what I'm saying, well, I mean, does it really matter? You're not gonna get a building permit unless the thing meets the building.
Exactly.
I don't think, I don't think, let's put it this way, I don't think the plans that we require should be any more strict than what's required for a building permit and I'm not exactly sure what that is.
That's exactly.
Well, and I think that's the question we need to ask.
You do not, you can draw your own.
Doesn't say, yeah, though.
Correct.
Okay.
If you can issue a permit or something.
Yeah, you know what?
I mean, I'd like to know what that is.
And I'm sure that you can get into structural issues that require an engineer to deal with it, absolutely.
No, 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 no.
It depen- I'm sure that the building codes show that, like can of lever weirdness or something where you need steel in there, you need an engineer.
Or a plate, we don't know.
Now Sean just pointed.
Yeah, I know.
Or an architect.
Sean just found something, on the water resource, we have done by architect, not stamped by architect.
Yeah, it's different than, than the other application.
Oh, done, as opposed to, see?
Yep.
It's, it's very slight difference, but it makes a lot of difference, doesn't it?
On the water resource, we had, for some reason on the checklist, we put done by architect.
Just as done by architect. So if you look on the water resources app.
As opposed to stamped.
Second checkbox.
I don't know.
Want me to table this until next month and we can ask, I'll ask Les what the deal is with the plan? Yeah.
I just wanna know what is required for building and you're right, we shouldn't be requiring anything more than building.
Okay, wanna put this on next?
Well, I can tell you what's required.
Well, I think it's certain, certain circumstances.
He told me he doesn't require.
Plans.
Okay.
Yeah, but we wanna know specifically whether it's licensed.
They have to meet, so in other words, if you have an A and R lot, you're fine, but if you have a lot that you need a variance on, so say you don't have the frontage, then.
We're talking floor plan.
This is just floor.
Right, but I understand that. But if you, if you're, the reason you'd be coming here is because you don't have enough space on some sort of side or something that's not, non-conforming, right?
Yeah.
So they're gonna put you to a stronger test, in my opinion.
Not necessarily if it's all interior.
No, you wouldn't be here if it was all interior.
No, the plot plan is clearly, any setback size of the building, that's, there's no question about that, I don't think.
Accessory apartment.
Cause I gotta know this kinda soon because I'm gonna be out, just gotta come off the web.
It's what Gina's suggesting is that if the walls are divided a certain way in a plan and we're calculating square footage or something, we base our decision on it and that's not a stamped plan and then they move.
The only thing we do is count the number of bedrooms and if you put in a three bedroom septic, you'd wanna see the plans for a, a three bedroom house.
No, but if they're doing.
We just need to ask Les.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll have a discussion with them and.
Is there anything else on here? Cause everything else you can probably change, that's the one that we wanna keep.
Um, just look at the next page in accessory apartment.
This is, fee is due upon filing, that's crossed out Patty, sorry. Before that, application fee is due upon filing, fee is due after application.
Yeah, that just wasn't on there. I had it, it, it said fee is due after pollution reviewed, it should just, it should say fee is due upon filing, it just.
Which is really the same thing. They're not gonna file until you review it.
Yeah, I mean, I just leave it.
Oh, it's the whole.
Alright, um, anything else on this?
Yeah, the next page, she's still talking about, this is not to exceed the greater of either.
I don't know, just look at the.
I don't see the greater of either.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's not to exceed either, seven hundred.
I thought we fixed that.
Yeah, we did, this is.
Either or.
No, I just didn't know if that was enough information. I think we went over that though.
Not to see the greater of.
Did we decide that we're all fine?
I thought we left, left it, yeah, we're just gonna leave as is, yeah.
Yeah, we left it.
We left it.
Were you the one who said no?
No, I was not. No, that was Dave.
That's the verbatim out of the code, right?
Yeah. And on the water resources, maybe I'll, I'll put the water resource application off for next month too because of that and then
I'd rewrite it if it was not verbatim out of the code.
On our water resource on the back page, like for this hearing, um, we have, it goes out to separate boards, like fire chief, hazardous waste coordinator for water resource, and then we have a line there that says
Sorted.
that the applicant has to distribute that and then it has to sign under penalties, but I think that should not be there because I end up just putting them in the mailbox anyway. Because it's easier, so maybe we just take that out. But I can put that on with this one.
Put it on with this one. I'm gonna talk to Les about this other stuff anyway and then following, I guess when we reconvene, we'll bring this up hopefully briefly next time and everybody will know what's going on and we'll.
Okay. Okay, and then this, this is. Distribute.
Sound alright? You guys good with that?
Yes.
Distribute that for next month.
Yep.
So that's for November first, seven thirty.
Yep. Moving along, um.
I do.
Do you have anything else for the business meeting Patty, this time?
No. Motion to close, if you're all done.
Anybody else have anything else this point?
Yes.
Dave, you good?
Good.
Nothing else? Okay, while you're motioning to close, the business.
Move to close the business meeting, uh, of, what's today's date? October fourth, twenty sixteen, Georgetown Board of Appeals.
Second.
Very good, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright. Closed. Um, is it seven thirty?
Seven thirty-two.
Anybody need a break, or are we good to get rolling here? We're gonna have a hearing for, um. Eleven Martel Way, right?
Yes.
Guys can.
If you put that on a board, so I just threw that up here, okay, might look better than that.
Read the legal ad last time. You wanna read that?
I don't read anything.
So, you can.
I can't.
I can't read, I can read it. What does that mean?
I'm not gonna get into it, personal, I'll tell Patty only.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Let you guys get settled, how are you, we'll let you get settled and we'll go ahead and open the, open the hearing. You all set, Patty?
Yes.
Uh, so then I'd like to open the hearing, uh, it's seven thirty four, thereabouts, on October fourth. I'd like to open the hearing for eleven Martel Way, um, and we'll start by reading the legal ad. Sharon, you gonna, okay, thanks.
Uh, so this is for eleven Martel Way, a public hearing will be held on October fourth, two thousand sixteen, at seven thirty P M at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor meeting room. For applications filed by Robert Salter, seven Florence Street, Salem, Mass, zero one nine seven zero, is a purchase and sale agreement with owners Northeast Marine LLC. Theodore Warren of Five Hardy Streets, Salem, Mass, for a special permit for the, for the proposed use for the indoor storage of vehicles and related activities, which also requires a water resource district special permit pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter forty eight, section nine. And the zoning, Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty five, section nine, seventy four dash seventy nine, and twenty nine dash thirty eight, water resource. The premises affected is eleven Martel Way and the I B District, assessors map sixteen, eleven E, Z B A file sixteen zero nine.
Alright, thanks Sharon.
Yep.
Um, and let me just introduce the members for you, so, uh, it was Dave Twiss, um, Sharon Freeman, and Sharon's an alternate member tonight, is that right, you are the alternate?
Um, an alternate.
Is that right?
Yes, right.
Well, and Gina Tebow, Paul Shillen, um, Sean Dean, and I'm Jeff Moore, I'm the chairman, and so the, Sharon will not be voting. Just so we're clear, so you guys know, but she will obviously be involved.
So who's voting?
Uh, the five regular, one, two, three, four, and Dave.
Isn't David associate?
Oh, you associate, oh, I gotta, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dave's associate, sorry.
So Sharon. Voting, are, whoever wants to.
Associate too, so who, who do we?
No, she went from regular to associate, so, alright.
Don't mind us.
Sharon's out, I'll go with my original, let me go with my original plan, so I'm not, uh, taking it confusing, so, alright. Um, sorry, you guys like to go ahead and introduce yourselves and.
Quick question, uh, sir. Are we going to open yet the second hearing after this hearing, so we're getting, uh, there's a use special permit and then we're gonna close that hearing and then open another one, or do we address them both?
Opening one hearing for.
For both.
That was also an illegal ad for both.
Alright.
Single application, actually, for two different.
Yeah, you could talk about the use first and do that and then talk about the water resource, but it's all one hearing.
Okay, thank you.
But there could be two decisions to be made.
There were two separate applications.
Oh, there were two separate applications.
Yeah, if you look at the previous decision in the application, we did it in one decision.
I noticed that.
We always did, we always did it that way, well, since I've been here.
And is, is that okay, or you're saying that's not, oh, okay.
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, I'm Nancy McCann, I'm an attorney from Danvers, and I'm representing the applicant, Robert Salter, who is here this evening. Also, here tonight is Barbara Warren, who, uh, represents the owner of the property. And this, I think, is a fairly straightforward application, uh, we have an existing, um, industrial building, commercial building that was permitted through the planning board, conservation commission, as well as this board, uh, back in twenty twelve. On the property at eleven Martel Way, it's a little over a nine acre parcel, it's a, a big parcel. It's located in the industrial B district, and we are seeking to simply change the use of that building. The existing use is for, uh, a kayak manufacturing, uh, business, and it was built, uh, for that purpose in twenty twelve. This board granted a special permit back then for, uh, the water resources use, because there, uh, there is a spray booth within the building and there were some resins and some things that were used in conjunction with the kayak construction. The kayak business, uh, is leaving that location, Mr. Salter has entered into a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the property. And he would like to change the use, uh, to accommodate his business, which is the storage of automobiles. He has clients who are collectors of vintage, classic, uh, collectible type of automobiles. They wanna secure safe location, an indoor location, for storing those vehicles. And this would be the perfect location, Mr. Salter has looked at this building and thinks it would meet his requirements without any changes um, to the building, other than dealing with some code compliance issues, which we've dealt with the building inspector and the plumbing inspector on. There will be no sales of vehicles, there will be no servicing of vehicles, there will be no, uh, storage of vehicles outside. Everything will be stored inside, there will not be a car wash in the facility, but we would like to continue to use the existing spray booth in its current location and current configuration for occasional touch-ups. Uh, repairs, a, a bumper, or some detailing and things like that, it will not be used very often and certainly not to the intensity that it's used currently or has been used with the kayak business. Uh, we met with the building inspector, I've met with him a couple of times, um, and he did issue a determination, which you have in your package which, with regard to the, um, proposed use of the building, we need a special permit because of indoor storage of automobiles, it's not a permitted use in the zoning district specifically. And we, uh, want to use, in conjunction with that, the existing spray booth. Uh, so we've applied for those two items, and then because the property is within the water resource district, we're requesting the special permit again, to continue to use the spray booth, which you granted the, the special permit for back in twenty twelve, and we're not making any changes to that. There is no change to the exterior of the site at all, um, the only interior changes will be, again, code compliance issues because of the storage of vehicles within the building, you have to have, um, certain type of drainage system in the building. The building inspector and the plumbing inspector have already met with, uh, Robert's consultant and has approved that, um, system. Uh, the drainage system that will go in the building, other than that, there's no changes proposed. Um, there will be two employees on the property, uh, working nine to five, Monday through Friday. There will be really very little, um, outward use, uh, of the property, there's very little, um, traffic generation here. People will store their vehicles here, they may come, if they have a show, then they have a classic vehicle, they may come and take the vehicle out for a couple of days and bring it back and, and store it again, so there's very little, um, activity on the site. Um, no use particularly of municipal services, again, there won't be washing of vehicles going on. Um, and very little traffic generation, I think that is really the crux of the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Dave, you're looking at me like you're gonna, go right ahead.
Before I do that, can you wanna just read the new, um.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, we just usually do new correspondence for us, and it was just that one from the fire chief who was fine. And, ooh, and there's an, um, the author, two authorizations.
Sure, yep, um, this authorization is dated August tenth, twenty sixteen. I hereby authorize my attorney Nancy A S McCann to sign municipal board applications on my behalf and represent my interest before Georgetown Municipal Boards relative to the property located at eleven Martel Way, Georgetown, Mass, signed by Robert Salter, the applicant. The second is email correspondence from, um, let's see, Ted Warren, uh, Aaron Allen as a manager of Northeast Marine LLC, Ted Warren permit the applicant, Robert Salter, to apply for any and all permits and approval is necessary to operate an indoor automobile storage facility on the premises of eleven Martel Way, Georgetown, Massachusetts, by Ted Warren, Northeast Marine LLC. Sure.
Uh, dated Monday, September nineteenth, twenty sixteen, from Fred Mitchell, regarding eleven Martel Way to Patty Pitarri. Hi Patty, after reviewing the proposal for eleven Martel Way, the fire department has no issues with the projects regard, Chief Fred A Mitchell. Georgetown Fire Department, and you want me to go ahead and read the, uh, plans into the record while we're at it? Get that out of the way, so exhibit A for this project is entitled Existing Conditions Plan of Land, dated eight nineteen twenty sixteen. Prepared for Robert Salter by Meridian Associates of Beverly, Mass, stamped by Charles E Ware the third, civil engineer, also dated eight nineteen sixteen. Recorded at the Registry of Deeds, Plan Book two thirty two, page seventy nine, and exhibit B is entitled Floor Plan Layout, Revised eight thirty one, twenty sixteen. And shows a layout of the spray booth and offices. Um, exhibit C will be the new correspondence from the fire chief that I just read in, okay? Alright, and actually, before I take questions from the board, let me go ahead and ask if there's any audience participation at this point, is anybody in the audience? Anything to contribute at this point, any concerns, no, okay, alright, Dave, you're up.
Alright, so, um, a couple of comments or questions, when you say detailing, I knew you were talking with respect to the, the, um, painting of the cars and the touch-ups, typically, is it standard that you'd wash a car after you'd paint it, because it'd be dust and whatnot?
No, I think that, um, you know, when you're painting, you don't wanna water around, really, I think also, um, you know, the cars are, you know, rust is sort of the enemy of any of these cars, and so limiting washing and water around something like that. I think that, um, you know, if you're, have, uh, dust from any sanding or any work that you do on the car, you vacuum it and sweep it up.
Okay, so these, um, prospective customers come in, they grab their vintage Corvette, they go off to a car show. They drive from your location to the car show, come back, do they wa- they're, they're assumedly going to wash that car before they come to you? Because they wanna keep it clean, obviously.
Right, well, they decide to wash it, it'd be off premises, um, we do a lot of the hand detailing with the, hand spray wash with the, you know, it's a kind of a detailing chemical that just sprays on, lifts off dirt, and leaves a little bit of a gloss behind, and it's just done with the, the spray and a cloth.
No changing oil, servicing?
We're not doing any of that there.
Or storage of, um, gasoline or anything like that?
You know, everyone's required to, you know, uh, keep a minimum amount of gas in the tank, you know, quarter of a tank below, ba- based on the contracts. And, uh, you know, that's something that, uh, you know, we're, we're very clear about when we have the agreements with them.
What's the capacity for, how many automobiles can?
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not looking to maximize it, but I think that, um, you know, getting, uh, you know, around twenty cars, uh, as, you know, as renters in there, and then, you know, some of my own cars, so, you know, there may be twenty-five cars in there.
You gonna have lifts?
Yes.
You can have an open house.
Well, I was gonna ask if you ever, you know, open, if you plan to open this as. As a showcase.
No, because, uh, we never have, there's, you know, it's a combination of, uh, people who have collectible cars and also people who take some certain cost to the track, so, that, you know, they put it on the trailer, they take it out to love, you know, a Palmer or up to, out to Lime Rock, they drive it on the track, and then they bring it back.
Won't be consignment for sales or anything like that?
No, no.
And how about personnel on site, is it gonna be manned or by appointment, your clients come by appointment to open the place, they have keys themselves, how does?
We're there, you know, uh, well, you know, Curtis who works for me right now would probably be there on a daily basis, and so, you know, he makes sure the cars are charged. He makes sure that, that the tires are filled, he makes sure that, um, if there's any little, um, you know, like detailing that they want or, you know, process that they want done, that he can do that, simple things, um, you know, disconnecting batteries, putting them in storage or keeping a charge on them, things like that, and he's available, um, you know, to bring the cars down, make sure they're near the entrance so if they're coming by for a drive, they can get to it, but they have to call in advance, it's not like they can just show up.
And they'd bring their own, their own trailer, their own vehicle or.
Bring their own vehicle, trailer.
Trailing services or?
Right, or they would, what happens a lot is someone will drive up in their daily driver, we'll bring that inside, they'll take the car up for the day or for the event, and then when they come back, they'll take the car up.
Okay, so you're not gonna be storing trailers on.
No.
Clients wouldn't be storing trailers, unless it was inside, I guess it wouldn't really matter, but.
So, you would take the, the car they're driving regularly and bring that inside as well?
Yeah, we just put it inside.
Oh, okay.
Because, uh, you know, it's just, I mean, usually the car owners are, you know, touchy about any car they own about getting rain, rain, or, you know, uh, just being outside, and the door opens up, they drive in, they drive out, and take their space.
These are special cars.
I really, I do appreciate you even mentioning the spray booth and the use of it, 'cause you could easily have done that without even, I don't think anyone ever would've known any better. So you're being very honest and forthright about the fact that you do wanna use that, there will be some painting, there will be some minor things going on. You're not, it's not a paint, it is a paint booth, but it's, it's for very minor things, and it sounds like you guys are gonna clean up all the, the waste and whatever, get it chipped out of there, so it's, it sounds, it sounds like a very low-impact operation.
Um, so regarding any, anything inside, the bill trays will be used indoors for, you have resins, hardeners, basically, it's the exact same process that was used on the kayaks, I assume, very similar, or is it?
I don't think they're the same kind of resins, I think it's, it's mostly, you know, um, you know, we don't store paint in there, but if someone has a ding or got scratched with the trailer, or got scratched with the track, that, you know, we would get the paint for that particular project and, and, you know, do the prep and then do the paint, um, just, you don't call it, it's like we have a booth with, we're gonna, you know, own a lot of different paint because we are doing like commercial jobs or anything like that, that we don't know what's coming in.
So you guys obviously reviewed the, the existing permit for the site, for the water resource in particular.
Exactly, and that called for, as you were just mentioning, resins and things like that, which were used in kayak manufacturing, we're not going to have that sort of thing. This would be automotive paint that would probably be purchased in very small, a quart amount, uh, from a, an automotive paint dealership. Like Sherwin-Williams makes automotive paints and things like that, um, but we wouldn't be using the resins and things like that that were used for the kayak manufacturing, however, we would still have the same state safeguards in place for, uh, for the use of the spray booth that were in place, they're all there, um, and.
Starts, build prevention or any of that.
Exactly, and those kind of things are still there and would be used.
So just for the sake of, you know, scope creep, as, as uses tend to kinda take off, I, do, do you have any objection to any of the provisions or the, uh, the conditions that were in the existing permit, I guess, so you would leave those in place? Which, what we got satisfied with, with the previous, previous, do you have any reason why we?
They're above and beyond what our need would require, but there's no problem keeping those conditions in there.
To make it easy, we could, I'm just suggesting that those same conditions be.
That's a good idea, yeah, yeah, that's great.
That way we don't have to get into all the details of how much paint or how little paint, or without having to discuss the whole process, 'cause I, I do recall, um, the previous meeting, we, we, we spoke a bit about the whole paint process and all that, so, get, get familiar with it. Okay, anybody else have any questions at this point?
And we can grant a, apparently, we need to grant a, a use of auto repair, correct? That's, that's, that's basically what it, it's, it's determined as, the billing inspector's determined that if there is any sort of painting or things like that, it's considered auto repair, unless we're gonna invent a new, uh, a new use.
It's gonna look at his.
'Cause there is no, there is no auto storage, uh, description in our, in our bylaws.
And that is, in, in my application, I requested the special permit for the indoor storage of vehicles and the special permit for the use of the spray booth, because the building inspector had indicated that that was more in the repair category.
And he, so your request in indoor storage.
It's an indoor storage of, of automobiles is the requested use.
Right, right, and the permit use of existing spray booth, and what, I guess what he's saying, suggesting is that if you did, if you listed it under auto repair it would be carried, it would carry both of those.
Well, I don't think we would wanna grant a use for auto repair, 'cause that's gonna open up a whole different.
So we're gonna come up with a new use?
Well, it's what they're requesting, which is the use of indoor storage of automobiles and the use of a, of a spray booth.
Accessory to the indoor storage, you might wanna just categorize it as an accessory use.
This was.
To the indoor storage, which is primary use.
So we, we've been talking about the use all sort of together, that's what they're planning to do, but really what we're gonna do is make two, you know, it'll be two separate decisions or, and motions on. On what's before, so one is the use itself, and one is the. Looking at you and you're not voting, so. For the water resource, so, anybody else have any other questions?
I'm looking at the bylaw, I'm just, say this again now, the accessory use will be the use of the spray booth?
Yeah, as accessory to the, uh, storage of indoor, of indoor storage of automobiles. Yeah, he says that.
I'm just confused the way he wrote that.
Yeah, well, he, he was trying to find, and we kinda spoke about this a little bit, I mean, he was trying to find the most closely related use that was in the bylaw. But motor vehicle repair is, is really a whole nother.
Yeah, I agree.
So we didn't, yeah, yeah, he didn't really wanna go there.
Unless you're gonna.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Um, if I was granting a special permit to you, and you were saying you were gonna store cars but you're gonna do minor repairs like replace windshield wipers and tires, or something remedial. We would then say that would be auto repair, because you're repairing the vehicle. I just, I don't wanna open Pandora's box, if we say you can store the vehicles and touch them up, which I don't think is an issue. Just so I'm stating that fact, but what precedent do we set if someone then says, well, I wanna store cars and I'm gonna do light repairs to them, like change wipers and, you know, so on and so forth.
We don't, just, I mean, we don't let anybody work on the cars in there, we don't have insurance for it, um, it's just nothing that we would ever really allow, it's just not safe. And we don't do repairs, so if someone, you know. And we don't do repairs, so if someone, you know, has to have something mechanical, their brakes repaired or brake changed, they would have to take it to a shop outside and then bring it back.
I totally appreciate that. But my point is, you are in a, in a sense, repairing a vehicle. If they come in and say, hey, I ding this up at the track and I get a six-inch scratch on my passenger door, I need, I need you to take care of it for me. You're repairing some ailment to that car. So, I don't have an issue with that. I think this is a decent use for this building, it's obviously gonna be beneficial to you. My concern isn't that, my concern is what happens down the road if someone else comes up and says, hey, I wanna buy this building and I'm gonna do X, Y, and Z. And while it's not a full paint job or a full new overhaul of a, you know, Corvette, they could say, you know, like I said, we're gonna do minor repairs or light repairs. We're gonna fix the rag top on convertibles and, and we're going to.
Now, where's the limit? So, if we grant the applicant, I mean, I'm looking at the bylaw one sixty-five dash thirty-two F, special permit motor vehicle service and repair, where's, where do we draw the line? I mean, can we craft a decision that just covers minor bodywork? But if we say vehicle service and repair, what would preclude them from changing the oil?
They're not asking for a special permit for vehicle service and repair. What you're asking for is a special permit for the use of indoor storage of vehicles and use, and what?
You put in legal item related activities.
And use of the, the existing spray booth as an ancillary to that use, period. They can use the, they can, if they wanna use a spray booth, they can use a spray booth. If you wanna change oil, not comply. So, I guess to answer your question then, if somebody else wants, they'd have to come and explain what they want to do. And then we're in a situation, well, you know what, this is really, becomes more of a retail auto repair shop, which is a total different.
I just wanna make sure we don't sound.
I don't know if that answers it, but.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Ancillary use of the spray booth.
You, you agree with that?
I totally agree.
All right.
It's a shocker.
That's just, that's just what we're looking for. And you know what, if the spray booth wasn't there, we probably wouldn't be asking to put one in. But it's there.
Yeah, no, I, no, I think that's great.
So, we might as well use it.
Absolutely.
The other thing is, we're not, they're not, this isn't retail. So, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a retail use. Talk, um, you know, we didn't talk about signage or anything, I just, just for the sake of discussion.
Whatever, you know, whatever you, I mean, I just assumed put one thing on that says Salter Motorsports on the outside and, and so when people drive up, they know that that's the building, but.
Right, yeah, I mean, you don't need a special permit from us for any signage, providing it complies with the law.
The sign will be compliant.
I presume you'd wanna keep this low-key given.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we.
You don't wanna sign, you can see it from forty, from ninety-five.
Well, I mean.
Free cars.
Lessons on those signs now.
I have a client that has a similar business where he repairs high-end vehicles. He does repairs, but they often stay there overnight or for a week. And if you have a half a million dollar car and you don't want people, his sign is like twelve by twelve. And I might have twenty-five of them.
Right, I don't, well, I don't think they'll all be, you know, that kinda level of collectibles. But we've had them and, you know, we, when, when deliveries come or some, you know, UPS or whatever and they go, wow, I see that and, you know, it's like, yeah, and then we point out the cameras and they laugh.
Where are you now?
Well, I left Wilmington, I was in, uh, on Fordham Road in Wilmington. And, uh, so now everything's squeezed into a, a building I have in Salem. But there's, there's really not enough space there and it's, doesn't have access. It's just bumpy and traffic. And, and so, um, you know, this is, uh, up near, uh, you know, a bigger part of the market that has collectible cars.
We're having a little sidebar over here, cause we're talking about motions, but.
You're gonna be, you're gonna build the structures to stack them up, you'll have?
No, we have them, um, you know, we have them from the old facility and they're all, they're all in Salem and in storage right now. They're those, you know, just the two-high lifts and you drive them on, they have the, you know, the plastic pieces in between and they go up and then another one goes underneath.
York City parking lot.
Yeah, I know, it's so crazy.
Well, that's what I was thinking when I first did it, but, um, the, the two-high are about three thousand, three, you know, thirty-five hundred. But when you go up to three-high, they jump up to sixteen thousand, cause like, cause of the structure and the. And so, it's not, it, it's not worth it unless you're, you know, overflowing with renters. But we, you know, it's, it's really just to maintain, pay for the building, you know, and have a place to, you know.
Store your cars, your cars.
And some of mine.
If someone else pays for your cars, that's good, that's excellent.
I'm glad that building's gonna be used again, it's nice.
Oh, Nancy had given us some pictures if you wanted to, just look at the, I only have one. Well, that's a, that's a color copy she gave me, I did make another separate, you can't, not as nice as that, just to.
Thank you.
Take a peek, oh.
She's sharing.
I'm wearing those, am I stuck them in the hole?
Sharing is caring, Patty. I can imagine that pond's probably empty by now.
Didn't they, didn't they just, they, they just built that when they came, twenty-twelve, twenty-twelve?
Um, does anybody else have anything, any other concerns you wanna address? Does the audience, anybody in the audience have any other concerns at this point? Anything you'd like to board to consider or address? Nope, okay. Sean is, uh, in the process of.
You wanna take a couple-minute recess?
Scratching his head on, uh, how to craft a couple motions for this, so you can bear with us for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, like, like, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Patty, all right, so we'll take a quick recess and let him, let it out if you guys are all right. Is there anything else you wanna discuss at this point?
I don't think so.
No, okay. All right, okay, so we're back. So, before we, uh, do any motions, is there, is there anything else at this point, guys? Everybody's, all the questions are, okay. So, Sean, you wanted to?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion on the, uh, special permit for the use. I move, uh, that the board grant a special permit to Robert Salter and Salter Motorsports located at seven Florence Street, Salem, Mass. Oh, one nine seven zero, who has a purchase and sale agreement with the current owner Theodore Warren of Northeast Marine LLC of Hart, of five Hardy Drive, Salem, Mass, oh, one nine seven oh, for a special permit for use to operate business being indoor storage of vehicles and a use of the existing spray booth as an accessory use for the property located at eleven Martel Way, Georgetown, Mass, in the IB District, Assessor's Map sixteen, Lot eleven E, in the Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Section nine, twenty-nine through thirty-eight, and seventy-four, seventy-nine. Further, the application has met one sixty-five dash seventy-nine A through D Special Permit Section. The requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience and welfare and will not overload any public water or other municipal system so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. It will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts and will not cause an excess of that particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, great, that way you're second.
And then?
Second.
Okay, David?
That's the first.
Okay.
All right, Patty?
Yep.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, it's in your board discussion at this point. Do a quick roll call, Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Sharon, um, sorry, Gina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes, so the use has been approved.
I would also, can I make the motion now? Also like to make, um, a motion for a special permit on the water resources. By law, I further move that the board grant a water resources special permit as the applicant provided or approved that per zoning by law, Water Resources, Chapter one sixty-five, Section twenty-nine, thirty-eight, that the proposed business being the indoor storage of vehicles with the use of the existing spray booth as an accessory use named Salter Motorsports LLC for the property located at eleven Martel Way, Georgetown, Mass, will not result in the degradation or the potential degradation of any groundwater and any surface water resources providing water supply to the town, including potential water supply to the town or any other town, namely Newbury, Raleigh, or Groveland. With, uh, and the special permit I move shall have the following conditions. Uh, one, that the applicant shall work with the planning board for site approval. Two, that spill trays are to be used indoors for all resins and hardener drums. Three, the temporary berm seals are to be made available for contaminant or any outdoor spills. And four, the applicant shall provide an emergency action plan outlining procedures for indoor and outdoor spill cleanup and a disposal plan outlining disposal methods for any toxic or hazardous waste to, uh, the fire chief.
That way you're second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Gina. Uh, is there any board discussion on this? Does the applicant have any questions at this point for us? No, okay, another roll call, vote, David?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
All right, and the chairman votes yes, so both your applications are approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You need to read us fourteen.
I do, yeah, thank you very much. All right, so. Like, where is my, sorry, excuse me?
It's on the first page.
Of what?
None of the proposed motion?
Oh, no, we usually put it on there, I got busy. It's just the fourteen, it's the, um, here you go, here you go.
Hang on, hang on just a second. I know, I know.
Yeah, yeah, rules of procedure.
Read fourteen days and close.
Rules of procedure, right here.
Yeah, I should know, I should know what my heart thinks. Can you remember it?
Can we paraphrase, I was just gonna say, can we just paraphrase?
Uh, per Mass General Law forty-eight, Section nine, special permits granted shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or, uh, wait the determination of appeal referred to in Section seventeen if a substantial use thereof or constructed does not commence, unless timely application is filed, um, excuse, excuse me, unless upon timely application the board finds good cause to extend such period, but that's not the one I was supposed to read, although it does apply. The zoning clerk has fourteen days, it does apply. The zoning clerk has fourteen days to file a decision of any appeal on this decision, which shall be made pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seventeen, within twenty days after the date of notice of the decision was filed by the town clerk. An application, an applicant, they file this decision before the twenty days, but does so with their own risk. So, she's got fourteen days to file a decision and there's a twenty-day appeal period that I'm sure you're well aware of, so. Okay, and there is a lapse of special permit if you don't commence use, as I read, so, all right? That's it, motion to close the hearing?
Close first, then adjourn, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
All in favor, okay. And, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, all right, those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hold on to this for when I do it.
Best of luck.
Patty will send us, thank you, this.
Patty will send us, okay.